There we go. This meeting is being recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I guess I'm not sure, ladies, who's doing the roll call? Okay, Dawn, if we can do a roll call, please.
Amy Morrison?
Here.
Eric Van Syes?
Uh, Van Syes, here.
Van Syes, I'm sorry. Paul Ryu?
Here.
Blossom Teal Olson? Present. Andrew Haines?
Here.
It might also be because mine was on at the same time, so maybe, no.
Much better, okay.
Should I do that again?
Sure, let's do it again, just.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Roll call, Amy Morrison?
Here.
Eric Van Syes?
Here.
Paul Ryu?
Here.
Blossom Teal Olson? Present. Andrew Haines?
Here.
All right, and the meeting is quorumed. Um, if we can get a, um, motion for approving the agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the, uh, proposed agenda as presented.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed agenda. Is there any public comment to the motion? Fourth comment? Any opposition to the motion? Um, actually, let's go and do, I'm not sure if there were any financial, I think there are some financial items, so let's go and do a roll call vote for this, too. This is a roll call for, um, approving the proposed agenda.
Okay, approving the agenda, the proposed agenda. Amy Morrison?
Yes.
Eric Van Syes?
Yes.
Paul Ryu?
Yes.
Blossom Teal Olson? Yes. Andrew Haines?
Yes.
All approved. All right, thank you. Um, so before we move on to our government-to-government reports, I just wanted to say a special welcome to a couple new faces at our table tonight. And we have Dawn Flanagan, is that correct? Who is our new administrative assistant and will be at our board meeting, so welcome, Dawn. This is, what, your third day on the job? So, um, and then also our new superintendent, Frank Howser, is official first meeting as our superintendent, so welcome tonight. Um, so, yeah, um, all right, so let's go ahead and move on to our government-to-government. Do we have anyone for that? Yes, come on up. Oh, she's behind you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I think I know everyone here, but for those who might not know me, my name is Lucrisia Johnson. I'm the Cultural Resources Education and Employment Director for Sitka Tribe. Uh, I have a couple things to report on this evening, um, some Sitka Native education program updates. Jewel and I have a survey out to gauge, um, interest from families and students on whether or not they're looking for in-person or virtual lessons. Uh, right now, most of those surveys are coming back asking for in-person, so we're getting pretty creative on how to offer those with our, um, mitigation plans that maybe don't align smoothly. Um, so that's in the works. We also, um, do have dates planned for their four sessions, and, uh, will be starting the week of November 6th. We haven't determined whether that'll be in-person or virtual yet. Um, I did get an email from Paul, who passed along a question from Blossom, who I was able to call today, um, just to clarify kind of my direction for this report. And, um, the question was specifically about, um, support for our students, STA travel citizen students in community involvement, scholarship applications, future planning, that kind of thing. Um, and we do have a few programs in the works right now that are also working on strengthening that part of our department. So right now, um, through the work of Hillary Nanning and Alec Duncan, who are our youth programs manager and assistant manager, they are putting together a youth professionals employment program for travel citizens that will start with internal, um, internships within our tribe in various departments to kind of get students in the, the working field and get experience with that and what kind of expectations those might be, um, post-high school. We do have that going on, and I'd be happy to follow up with an email, um, with Hillary and Alec's information for any future questions you might have. Um, in addition to them, we also have our workforce development and scholarship manager, Lillian Young, um, who I can include in that email as well. And, uh, we're actually working on strengthening the partnership between Hillary and Lillian in our department so that that support happens, you know, K through 12th grade, and there's a bridge between that graduation and what's next. So more to come on that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if folks have them. Um, and the final thing I wanted to discuss this evening is, um, as I had mentioned, the district COVID potential mitigation plan does not align with the STA COVID mitigation plan. Um, and STA has been pretty regularly following CDC and AAP guidelines, which do push for back to in-person full-time with a huge emphasis on mask use. Um, so one of the things that we're working on with various principals and other partners within the district is how do we get creative in making our lessons, our classes, available to students without, um, putting our staff and families at risk. So we will be working on that, and I would like to speak on behalf of myself and the tribe in, um, support of aligning those mitigation efforts with CDC and AAP, which would require masks at all levels despite vaccination status. Uh, and that is, again, for myself personally and the tribe of the, of the stance of the tribe. So, again, would be happy to answer any questions there. If there are specific questions on where maybe those mitigation plans don't align and how we can get more creative on, on working around that, um, I'd be happy to have those conversations with folks as needed. Um, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you.
Good evening, Rebecca Himshut, Sitka Assembly. I think it's, um, pretty obvious that everyone on the assembly is closely tracking what's happening with COVID in Sitka, as you are. And so I think that's the main thing from the assembly for right now is just making sure we manage things the best way we can for our kids, families, and the community. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, um, Mr. Howser, did we have the recognitions? Were you gonna read that list?
I was gonna move the recognitions into my presentation, so.
Oh, okay, perfect. So we will skip item number six and do that postponed until later in the agenda. Um, all right, so persons to be heard. And one thing I just wanted to point out to the, it's a little bit maybe, um, hidden in our agenda, but when Mr. Howser gives a superintendent update, which is item 10B, he does have a pretty lengthy presentation on our COVID mitigation plans. So, um, as we go into persons to be heard, if anyone has anything that they want to say on that, you absolutely are welcome to, I won't discourage you, but I would also let you know that we do have an item later in our agenda. So if you have any comments or questions specific to that, I would maybe encourage you to wait and hear his full presentation and then ask, you know, questions accordingly based on what, the information that he has, because it's gonna be pretty detailed. So, um, that being said, persons to be heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about a topic that is not on the agenda. As these are not agenda items, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. Questions for clarification may be posed by board members. The board may choose to refer items to the superintendent or designate for further action. The standard time limit for comments will be three minutes unless otherwise stated by the board president with consent of the board. A sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful, and charges or complaints against specific employees are not permitted per Alaska State statutes. Members of the public are referred to Board Policy 1312, 1312.1, 1312.2, 1312.3, and associated administrative regulations, as well as to Board Bylaw 9323 for information on how to lodge complaints. Speakers are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. Are there any persons to be heard tonight?
Hi, my name is Emma Thompson. I'm the Youth Program Manager at Sitkins Against Family Violence, and I'm here to talk about our programs, Girls on the Run and Boys Run Itu Katsin. These are both social-emotional learning programs for elementary students in Sitka, and they use running as a vehicle for teaching healthy life skills to third to fifth graders. So positive adult mentors serve as coaches for this program, and they teach skills to the kiddos like teamwork skills, healthy relationship skills, communication, positive self-talk, all those kinds of things. And they promote positive connection between program participants as well. Girls on the Run is a national program, but Boys Run Itu Katsin is regional, and it is rooted in Southeast Alaska traditional tribal values and culture. So at the beginning of last school year, the members of the Pathways to a Safer Sitka Coalition Peer Culture Work Group came together to figure out how to offer programming safely to elementary school students during the pandemic, and the result was Keep Kids Run Itu Katsin, which is an adapted version of Boys Run to occur virtually. Um, so we had both a fall and spring season of the program last year, and we had a postseason survey, both for participants and guardians. And what we found was that 85% of guardians responded that Keep Kids Run was a positive way for them to connect to their kid, and 100% of guardians responded that Keep Kids Run was a positive way for a child to maintain connection with other peers and with adult mentors. Um, I mentioned that Keep Kids Run is an adapted version of Boys Run. We learned a lot of lessons from adapting the program, so we're actually going to make slight adjustments to the Boys Run program. And for that reason, we will be implementing Girls on the Run this fall and Boys Run in the spring as compared to our usual flip schedule. Um, so we will be offering updates, sharing with the community in the newspaper, on the radio, and on our Facebook page at SAFE, so please keep an eye out for that. We're hoping to be in-person, but we'll be implementing the fluid virtual model, which means we can switch back and forth between in-person and virtual as needed. Um, so recruitment's gonna begin soon. We'll be looking for 30 participants, so if you know any girls who might be interested, please keep an eye out for our application and send them our way. Thank you.
Quick question, is it second through fifth grade then?
Third through fifth grade.
Third through fifth, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rita Christensen. I use they/them and she/her pronouns, and I am a member of the Sitka Youth Leadership Committee. Um, SILK is a group of teens trying to make a difference in the community by promoting respect, equity, and healthy relationships. We go through a planning process to determine goals for the year and launch campaigns and projects through social media and other channels like peer education.
And I serve as an adult facilitator for the Sitka Youth Leadership Committee. Again, my name is Emma Thompson, and I'm the Youth Program Manager at Sitkins Against Family Violence. And SILK is supported by adult facilitators who are all members of the Pathways to a Safer Sitka Coalition.
Uh, we gain leadership skills such as learning how to make sure your voice is heard in an effective and respectful way. We make connections with other youth leaders in the community, and we gain knowledge on different topics of interest, such as unhealthy relationships, mental health, and harmful masculinity norms. Um, our work is to create a safe space for learning, growing, and acquiring leadership skills to support one another. Our recent inactive campaigns are the Healthy Me, Healthy We, which works with peer education to educate people on how to identify unhealthy and abusive relationships and what to do about them, while also promoting healthy relationship norms.
The state of Alaska actually picked up this campaign, and it's reached over 300,000 individuals over the past several years. We were also featured in a national website under the National Resource Center on Domestic Violence for this campaign and for SILK's peer education program. The Equity Campaign is another of SILK's campaigns that encourages individuals to examine their own power and figure out how to use the privilege that they have for good to benefit others. And SILK is currently working on the Healthy Masculinity Campaign. Um, SILK also reviewed the Alaska Save Children's Act this year, the new curriculum developed by the state, and has kind of been part of assisting with that throughout. Um, each year, we do an end-of-year survey that SILK members fill out. 100% of members this year agree that as a result of SILK, they feel empowered to make positive changes in their community. They all also agreed that as a result of SILK, they're more confident in facilitating difficult discussions with others. And one quote that really stood out was a member said, "I joined SILK because I wanted to learn how I could make positive impacts and changes in my community. I wanted to learn how to meaningfully reach and lead others while taking the time to care for others."
We are also recruiting and looking for more Sitka-based teens to join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other persons to be heard? Chris, is there any? Anyone on there? Oh, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Brett Wilcox. I'm the author of Jabbed: How the Vaccine Industry, Medical Establishment, and Government Stick It To in Your Family. I am here to speak on behalf of Sitka's kids. Uh, last week, I sent a letter, I emailed a letter to the Sitka Assembly, which I forwarded to, I think, most everyone who's sitting in front of me now. I'm not here to argue, uh, the science of masks. If you don't know that masks don't work by now, after 18 months into this, then anything I say is not going to convince you otherwise. I'm here to talk to those of you here who do know that masks don't work, especially when worn by children. I'm here to talk to those of you who do know that masks trap bacteria and gunk on kids, especially when kids are wearing them. And I'm here to talk to those of you who know that masking children is child abuse. Uh, we're all familiar with the story of the emperor who had no clothes. The, the story comes to an end when the little boy states the obvious. The emperor has no clothes. That statement woke everybody up from a collective diluted psychotic state. There are people out there who have created a situation where through 24/7 fear-mongering, they have placed society in a collective diluted psychotic state. And epidemiologists unfortunately are drawn to the fear-mongering message the way pedophiles are drawn to the Boy Scouts of America. As recently as seven, three months ago, 17% of epidemiologists were afraid to touch their own mail. 26% of epidemiologists were afraid to go on hikes. And these are the people that we are looking for to create public policy. These are the people that are making policy that you follow. There are no, there are those of you here in this audience that know that that is absurd. There are those of you here that know there are kids screaming, "We can't breathe." And, and they are learning from you that their words don't matter, that their bodies don't matter, that, that adults can do whatever they want to them. And, uh, if that sounds like something that abusers would love, it's because it is, because it is child abuse. In the, the story of the emperor, uh, who had no clothes, there were adults on the side of the road who undoubtedly knew that the emperor had no clothes, but they kept their mouths shut. They were afraid of losing their positions. They were afraid of losing their standing in the community. Losing your position is one thing. Losing your standing in the community is one thing. But losing your standing before God is an entirely different thing. I know many of you, I know you are good people. I know you want to do the right thing. Someone has got to speak up for, for our kids and, and protect our kids from the sociopaths that don't care that they're hurting our kids and from the germophobes who can't see that they're hurting our kids. I, I remember once reading of, uh, a saying, "That it's better for a man to have a millstone hung around his neck, and he be cast into the sea and drowned at sea than to hurt one of God's children." Can I get an amen? So be it.
Thank you. Any other persons to be heard tonight? And Chris, nothing on there? Okay, all right. So moving on to school highlights, the best part of our agenda. And since I'm looking at Ms. LaCron, I'm gonna call you up first. Well, that's how hard it has to follow. Woo! Am I allowed to take this off? Okay. All right, I'm gonna try and talk fast. So our school has been busy getting ready to open. Um, kind of getting our school set back up from a half-day to a full-day model. Um, we have three great Americor, two of which will stay the full year. The third one will leave in January, and they've been super helpful in just getting those little things set up and ready to go. Tomorrow, we're lucky enough to have an in-person COVID-friendly Meet Your Teacher. It's a little different than we normally offer, but we're gonna do it. Um, thanks, Chris, Captain COVID, for helping me figure out how to make it happen. Um, and thank you, Sarah Laurie, for always helping find those great Americor. We had great PD all week. My staff really loved Helen Mongan-Relis, or Relis, I guess, and her, um, her workshop the other day was great, and we hope she can come back in the future. Berenoff Kids Camp this summer was great. We do it for our incoming kindergarten kids to help them build relationships and to get those social-emotional skills they need to be happy and ready when they come into kindergarten in the fall. And from what I'm hearing from family members and neighbors, um, they are happy and excited to be starting kindergarten next week. Um, kindergarten is starting, and first grade, normal schedule. Um, and, you know, last year, we started a third, a third, a third so that we could really teach all of our COVID mitigations to our kids, and we're doing that again. We're gonna go through proper handwashing, sanitizing, masking, mask breaks, um, social distancing. And I think that's one of the reasons our school was very successful, um, throughout the entire year. Um, and like all the schools, um, we will be requiring masks in the building at risk levels moderate and above. Um, let's see, and I think it's going to be a great year. Are there any questions for me? Nope, all right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Demmer, would you like to go next?
Good evening, nice to see everybody again. Um, it's just been great to have staff back in the building this week. Schools are not supposed to be empty. In those first couple weeks that we're back to work, uh, they feel pretty empty. Uh, and we're really looking forward to getting students back in the building next week. Um, this week, we're working hard on kind of getting our physical space put back together and prepping, like Jill said, for full-day school. Um, we did a great workshop today, uh, with Helen on culturally responsive teaching. I think overall, staff really enjoyed that. And, and one thing that was, um, I think really good about it was relevant, and there were takeaways that I felt like staff could just immediately start to implement and, and think about, uh, in their teaching practices. Um, we're working on getting all of our mitigations in place. Very similar and consistent with Berenoff and the rest of the district, masking, um, social distancing, hand hygiene. Uh, we're limiting a number of students on the playground. We're gonna eat lunch in our classrooms this year to avoid large groups inside, those types of things. And getting, uh, all of our staff and, and everybody, uh, on the same page with those and clear expectations. Uh, we're doing a Meet Your Teacher, um, tomorrow with second graders. Uh, we're gonna bring them into the building by appointment, those families. And then our third, fourth, and fifth grade will be kind of a virtual, uh, phone call type of Meet Your Teacher, uh, this year. Uh, and we got to welcome one Americor, uh, into our building, Jonathan, and he's been fantastic so far, um, really working hard for us, and, and I think he's gonna be great. And, uh, we were able to welcome Ernie back into the building this week. So that was fantastic. And I'll tell you what, we missed him when he was gone, so. Any questions?
For Keith? Were you supposed to get three Americors this year?
We were hoping for four, um, but we, we got three, and I have to, I'll tell you what.
Oh, you got one, that's a neat one.
We got one.
Gotcha.
We got one, we were hoping for four.
But you had three that came.
One. We just had one, yeah, sorry. Uh, but Sarah really worked hard. She was communicating with me all summer and, uh, and trying to recruit and, and get people. We ended up with, with one.
Got you.
And she's still working on, uh, hopefully getting one or two more up for us, so, yeah.
So not to get too deep in the weeds, but it's an issue of finding Americors to fill the positions.
Right, correct.
Because we don't have the funding for it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yep, just find the people.
Oh, interesting, okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? Thanks.
Mr. White?
Evening, everybody. Hope you're all doing well. Um, so, uh, like everybody, I'm very excited. I'll talk very quietly then, because I think I'll deafen you if I talk in my normal tone. Um, we're very excited to have, uh, staff and a full day of kids coming on Monday. It's been too long since we've had that. We're gonna have seven periods, so we're really excited about that. We've spent a lot of time, and I think everybody, all the teachers in our district, need a big shout-out. This year's PD schedule is hands-down the most jam-packed, at least in the decade that I've been the principal at Blatchley that we've ever had, because we're having to physically redo the school to have kids back in the classrooms. We're having to take a lot of action to get, uh, things in place for all the COVID mitigations, on top of all just, uh, everyday, normal stuff you have to do. So, uh, we literally have been going, I mean, I don't even have bathroom breaks built into my PD, uh, schedule this year, and we still don't have enough time. But the staff have been awesome, they've stepped up, we're getting it done. We're really excited to have, uh, a full day and kids coming back. Um, and, and again, we, uh, will have the sixth graders like we normally do. The first day, they'll be the only ones in the building will go through the PBS, Positive Behavior Support, Orientation, all the COVID mitigations. We will then do that the following day as well with seventh and eighth graders so that everybody's on the same page, we have a chance to practice and walk through all that sort of thing. We are gonna have, uh, we can't really do an open house this year, so to speak, like we would typically do, um, because we're trying to avoid groups of larger than 50. So we are gonna have some question-and-answer sessions tomorrow, uh, one for sixth grade and then one for seventh and eighth grade parents, both in-person and on Zoom. We've got, uh, three separate locations, so if our numbers grow, uh, too big, we can have them in different groups and answer any questions they might have. Uh, Jump Start wrapped up, uh, just, what, two weeks ago? That was, uh, uh, kind of spearheaded by Laura Rogers, Caitlin Woolsey, Alex Daly, and Drew Larson taught that. We had 40 kids for three weeks who came four days a week, three hours a day, worked with the Science Center, Patty Dick did like an edible beach walk, all outside, hands-on, science and math activities. It was great, it was a, it was a big hit. And the kids actually really enjoyed what they were doing because of the kind of field trip outdoor nature of everything, so that was great. Um, we, I gotta give a shout-out to, uh, Scott Calhoun, who owns the Coke Plant. Last year, he out of the blue ordered like three or 400 Blatchley Middle School t-shirts and just had them dropped off to us. And I walked into my office today, and there's 300 more t-shirts, and it's great. We use them for, and they're really cool designed, too. I'm sure he didn't design them, but, um, they're, they're really cool. The kids love them, the staff love them, and that's just so nice of, I think that's kind of indicative of our community, that without being asked, they're like, "Oh, let's do something cool for a bunch of the kids." So we really appreciate that. Finally, um, uh, Ms. Rogers and I were crunching numbers. We have 22 additional kids this year at Blatchley that were not there in May of last year. Most of those are new kids to our district. Some of them are kids returning from homeschool, um, but I think 14 of them are new students, which is great. We have, uh, you know, a trend of declining enrollment, so anytime we're ticking back up the numbers, that's fantastic. Uh, that's all I have. Any questions from anybody?
We have a question online from one of the parents that Zoom-linked for the, uh, I think, Q and A, or the, the parent Meet the Teacher.
Which. Which, what's the question of the eighth grade? Yes, what about it?
Where can they find that link?
That was emailed home to all the families today. If you did not get it, call the school, and I will update your email.
Copy that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. White, I have a question. What if parents do not have email and email access?
So it's also on our Facebook page. I can try to link it via Remind, but the issue is if they don't have that access, Remind is also not going to work. Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lundvik?
Hello, welcome back. We have also, I'd like to echo, had just a great week of professional development. And I'd really like to thank Frank and Chris to keep me from having to talk all afternoon today. They took care of some of the PD today, so thank you for doing that, those trainings. I'd also like to thank Mr. White, because our two staffs, Blatchley and Sika High, got together this morning, and we've started a collaboration, and I think the departments did some really great work today, and that was a good start. Our staff is energized and excited and working really hard, focusing on a safe return for all of our students, and that is unique to our building because we co-horted last year. So we have done a lot of work on mitigation. I'm finalizing right now with my staff the parent guide that will explain it all, so that will be going out this week prior to school starting. We had a really good summer with some credit recovery for some students, so I'd love to thank Jamie at Reach, lots of help, and was really productive. We have new student orientation on Monday, so freshmen and new students are welcome all day on Monday, and then we bring everyone back on Tuesday. And so we're really just looking forward to having movement back in the building. Yes, we're going to be wearing masks, that's okay. We're just happy to be back in person and letting kids be kids and have learning go on face to face. We also have activities have started, and we have cross-country going and volleyball and swimming. So we're looking forward to seeing some kids put the red, white, and blue on and compete.
I just have a question, Sandra, is it, so my understanding this year, it'll be, everybody will be going, there won't be the alternating days, is that correct?
It is correct.
And I was just wondering if earlier we made a budget adjustment for some desks modules, have those arrived and been able to be set up for you?
One classroom set has arrived, and they are put together and in place, and the next are due to arrive by mid-September. So we've pieced together enough to be able to have full go, we're ready, we have our distancing, we have our mitigations, we're ready to screen at the doors, we have seating charts made, we're ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And Ms. Summer?
Okay, good to see you all. I just want to start out with our greatest highlight, I think, of this year by introducing our new school social worker to you. Huge amount of gratitude to the school board for approving the funding for this position and recognizing the value and the need at Pacific High School. And so we went through the hiring process last spring, and Ramon Covedo is our new school social worker. He's been in the district before, and we're very happy to have him back in the district. I invited him here tonight, just, one, we want to celebrate as our big highlight, to have some social, emotional, and mental health support in the building, and also to offer up an opportunity for Ramon to say anything to you.
I'm just excited to start and meet the kids and get, just get rolling, and I'm glad there's a social worker there now, and I just hope I can make, do well. I don't want to mess it up.
You'll do fine. Cool. I'm going to run down another list of highlights. You're welcome to sit here with me, or you're welcome to go?
I'll, I'll.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Ramon. Okay, similar to what some of the other principals have said, I just want to start out by thanking Pacific High staff. I'm getting a really big echo in my face, I don't know if you guys are getting that too. Bridget Reynolds and Matt Groen, our math and science teacher and our social studies teacher, did summer school for us over the summer, and so Matt offered some Alaska Studies credit and had a good time with kids doing some fishing and filleting and fish smoking and learning about some different cultures across the state. And then Bridget did math work with students, some math recovery work, and so that was really nice to have students in the building over the summer and recovering some credit. So I just want to put a shout out to both of them. And then to all of the teachers at Pacific High School, we used some of our school improvement money to bring our teachers back a couple of days before contract time to do some very specific planning around our social, emotional learning program and math and literacy in our school. And so Pacific High teachers actually came back last week on Thursday and Friday, and we had some pretty intensive planning around those two pieces. It really focuses on our orientation at the beginning of the school year. We spend anywhere between nine days to two weeks, depending on how the school calendar plays out, in orientation with our students, and that is doing community building and relationship building activities. This is when we will retrain our returning students and train our new students in our, you know, layered COVID mitigation, where they learn about our restorative practices and where they really learn what Pacific High is all about and what school will look like for them for the rest of the year. And so we did that planning during our first couple of extra duty days. Great to have them back. We, I also want to welcome Ellie Veer is an AmeriCorps, she's our academic support AmeriCorps, and we also ordered three AmeriCorps. We have one so far, and Sarah Lowry has been working hard to get those positions filled, but it's just, there's fewer AmeriCorps right now. So just to put the request out for any of you who may know young people who'd be interested in AmeriCorps position, we still have yet to fill the kitchen position of our AmeriCorps for the AmeriCorps, and which means our AmeriCorps from last year, Abby Rosfeld, who's going to fill in for the first week of school, cooking breakfast and lunches for us. And then we are getting creative after that. And so if you've got any young people out there who even have just a little bit of cooking skills, we'd be sure happy to talk to them and see if they'd be interested in the program. Let's see, Abby, or Ellie did some student teaching during her undergraduate work, she's from Virginia, and so she's excited to be our academic support AmeriCorps and get into the classroom, and she has a background in computer science and math, which is one of our areas that we're looking for some growth, and so it'll be great having her in the building helping out. Pacific High staff also spent some time with Helen Mongan- Rallis, she's been fantastic, and we're really looking forward to having her more often throughout the year in the district. We did a collaborative training with Sika Native Education Program staff. Just yesterday, we spent an afternoon doing the culturally responsive education training, and we'll have another afternoon where SNAP staff and Pacific High staff will really dive into embedding culturally responsive education throughout our school calendar. That's really what we're going to look at, looking at our Friday Life Skills classes, as well as finding more ways to integrate culture throughout our curriculum and through our school day and through our school year. So we're looking forward to that. And another big highlight for us, I think, gosh, maybe, it may have been the last time I was here giving you highlights, but I let you know that we applied for the Farm to School grant to support our school Farm to Table program. We are recipients of that grant, we did receive it. And so the funding is specifically for a school gardener, a staff person to focus specifically on management and development of the school garden area behind our school, as well as work with our teachers, developing curriculum. So teachers, it's really to create the sustainability plan and the curriculum resource pack for teachers in different discipline areas to get students out into the garden and do learning out in the garden. And we've also, part of that position is also to work with Berenoff Elementary School, any teachers who are interested in becoming more comfortable or more knowledgeable with taking students out into the garden, because we do have a shared gate where Berenoff students can come over and do some work there as well. So that's pretty exciting that we've been thinking about and planning in our heads, writing that Farm to School grant for a few years now. And so a shout out again to Sarah Ferenczi, who put some time into helping us get that grant written, it's a government grant, so it's pretty arduous, and we found out this summer that we got it. And so we are just in the process, working through the process of hiring for that position. We haven't advertised for it yet, but that's really what's happening now and will be happening in the next few weeks. And so I'm hoping that in the next time I come to bring you highlights, I can also introduce our new school gardener to you as well. Any questions? Okay.
Oh, real quick, Mandy?
Yep.
Any rough idea of how enrollment is looking, your enrollment for this?
Yeah, thank you, that was something I was going to mention. We have 36 students enrolled, signed up for interviews. We do, so on the 23rd and 24th, next Monday and Tuesday, we do half-hour interviews with our students and then our, and parents, and our school starts on the 25th. We have 36 kids signed up, enrolled, which really, we usually have a 40-student cap, and so that's a, that's a good high number for us at the beginning of the school year. We tend to get a few more that trickle in in September and October. We have gone over our cap of 40 students before, in, you know, in the time that I've been in this position, we've gone up to 45, 46. That'd be really difficult to do now with the social distancing that we would need, but we do feel that we can manage the 40-student cap right now, so we're getting close to that. Thanks for asking.
Yeah, thank you, that's wonderful.
That's great. And I don't have the numbers, in fact, I brought our roster with me and it's in the car, but similar to what Ben said, we do have a handful of new students that are coming, that are new to the district or are coming back into the district, and so increasing those numbers as well as, as well of students who are coming back into the district, so that's always good. All right, thanks.
See, it's my biggest highlight, actually. I prepared a speech, actually, so it'll take a while, I'm getting. So for years at Blatchley, I've tried to get kind of an intervention or enrichment schedule built where all kids in any given academic area can get the support they need to enrich those skills and have growth. And finally, this year, we're able to do it. We have an enrichment schedule for all students, half an hour day, three days a week, one of those days, the remaining few days is on Friday, we don't run that schedule, and then one day a week, we have PAC during that time, which is our social, emotional learning curriculum time. But what I'm so excited about is our math department, which is Jeff Clay, Joe Plessner, and Kate Mullen took the lead on this, and they, we spent a day training. Every teacher in the building is going to have a group of kids during that time to work on those kids at their level in math to enrich those skills, and I'm so excited about it. We're doing this despite the fact that we don't have money for an interventionist and despite the fact that we don't have money for a curriculum, so it's kind of a tall order, but as a staff, at the end of last year, we thought since we're going to come back to a new and different schedule than we've ever had, now is the timing, we've got 9,000 changes anyways, what's one more change? So we decided to do it, so I'm really excited to see what that yields across our school, and I also think it will, if we do it well, and that is obviously our plan, I think it will open the gates to do it across several curricular areas, and we can actually be giving kids the extra time they need without taking them out of other classes to get them that extra time, so I'm pretty stoked about that, and I will update you more on it as we go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we are on to board member reports, and I'll just start down there with you, Blossom. Do you have anything to report?
I do not.
I really don't either, it's good to see everybody, thank you. Yeah, just real briefly, the only thing I've been, Marcia said the only thing I've been tracking, especially the last couple of weeks, is best I can through valid and recordable news sites, especially this last week for schools, public schools in the United States have been opening and seeing how they're doing, and there's, it's been some very interesting data coming out of the southwest and southeastern areas of the United States, and looking at what they're facing and handling regarding the COVID-19 and whatnot, and then boring in to see, well, what kind of mitigations did they have in place, what were their setups? And anyways, there's probably more to come and after we, we'll talk more, but it's, all I can say is that what we've been doing up here and continuing to do up here, I think, are setting a bar for where we need to go with public education during this time.
I just, oh, sorry. I just wanted to thank staff for staying flexible and dynamic and just trying to make the most of everything every day, so it really shows, thanks.
Yeah, the only thing I really had to report is I was able to go to the, I don't even know what it was called, the first day back at school on Monday morning for all district wide in service, okay, Monday morning and see all the staff together at the PAC, and that was, that was really fun. The energy was high, and it was great to see everyone's faces, and just to be excited for this school year, it's a lot different than it was a year ago, so I'm very thankful for that. And then I think I'll, the only other thing I'll mention, kind of tagging on to what Eric was mentioning, is, you know, I just think it's worth reminding people that we did get through last year so much better than, you know, the majority of districts in Alaska and in the rest of the country, and we stayed open when most districts didn't, and I really think it's because we worked together as a community. We worked with our superintendent, with our administration and staff and parents and everybody, you know, to do what was best for students, and I just hope we can maintain that going forward. I know it feels like now that, I don't know, things just seem to be a little bit more controversial, and I get that there's always going to be two sides of looking at things, but I just hope that we can just communicate and be respectful with everybody as we move forward and decide, you know, where we're going to go this year with things, so I just think that's worth mentioning. On that, we'll pass it on to Mr. Hauser for our budget update.
Thank you very much. We're still pretty early on, so there's really not a lot to report regarding the budget. We have received our first foundation and city funding monthly payment. One thing that I did want to touch on earlier in the summer when I came in, we did apply for a Department of Health and Social Services COVID-19 screening testing grant, and we were a recipient of that grant, and that grant is actually helping fund our COVID testing coordinator, and that will be in place through June of 2022. It is also helping provide for test kits for rapid testing, so we're able to have access and resources to get more rapid testing, to make sure that we have plenty on hand as we're going through and providing our testing, optional testing for our staff and students every week. And that is something that we'll talk a little bit more about as we get further into my report. We've also purchased medical-grade HEPA filters for our music band rooms and our elementary gyms, and this is just another additional mitigation that we have in place that we're laying on, just to continue to ensure that we're keeping the air pure, keeping, you know, kind of air circulating, but also making sure for those areas that we have high volume of students coming through, we're taking that extra step to try to continue to have those mitigations in place to ensure that, you know, the space is safe for our students and our staff. Other than that, there's not much more to report on the budget, were there any questions? All right, so I will go ahead and move on to my be kind of doing a couple of different things, so bear with me as we go through. I did want to, yeah, sorry, board members, it's a realization that that might not be the best placement of that screen, so. So I also wanted to add and talk about, I did, I wanted to start really by showing you a few highlights of the last month. I know that everyone is really looking forward to the COVID-19 mitigation portion of my presentation, and that will be coming shortly, but we're not going to let COVID interfere with our celebrations and recognizing our students and our staff first and really checking out our goals for the district. And so I did want to start my presentation with the Blacksley Jump Start Enrichment Program that took place in July. I was not able to get pictures of the Bearinoff Kids Camp, but I did hear wonderful things. But I did stop by and participate in some of the fun games, opening up the Jump Start program. And like Principal White said, we had about 40 kids that participated in the program and really helped support students during that very important transition to middle school. We saw a lot of excited faces and had a lot of fun in the activities. In fact, I was coming out of Pacific High School later that day, and one of the students that I met that morning came up to me and says, aren't you the superintendent? And I said, I am, yes. And she says, I met you this morning. And I said, how was the Jump Start program? She says, it was amazing. It was great. I loved it. It was so much fun. And so just programs like this that connect with kids, bring students back in the building, and just really kind of transition and build that comfort, really ties to the social emotional SEO component that we really are striving for and just connect students to the school. So I wanted to highlight that opportunity that we had, because it was a really good time at that point in the summer when we got the kids back. I also wanted to, you know, say that we're excited about our ability to expand our lunch program and offer free lunches to all of our students this year. We have a separate fruit and vegetable grant for elementary schools, and unlike last year, all of our students will receive hot meals this year. I'd also like to kind of thank Mr. Kennedy for reaching out and talking to us about the free lunch program. I don't know if you got a chance to see him, the Sidikstentle, there is a nice story about that. And there was a really nice comment by C. Coleman that really talked about just, you know, the benefits of being able to, you know, provide meals for free to kids. And so I really appreciated that. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight and celebrate that. I'd also like to welcome 14 new staff to the Sitka School District. They are listed here, and you can see that the staff are from, you know, across the school district, Bearinoff, to Blacksley, Pacific High, and Sitka High School. In addition, we do have two new district office staff. Of course, we did welcome Dawn Flanagan earlier today, but we also have Kim Sparks, who's in the office as well. I also wanted to, you know, welcome our new AmeriCorps members this school year. They've already been here. They were at our cross district in service, district wide in service, and have been participating, and it's been great having them as part of the Sitka School District team. As President Morrison mentioned, this week on Monday, we had our first district-wide in-person in-service, the first in-person in-service that we've had in two years. And it was great getting everyone together and being part of that morning to the afternoon. The energy was actually very high. It was really exciting for me to be there to welcome and to greet the staff, because I've just been excited to step into this role and really work with them. The other part that I was really excited about coming to Sitka is all of the SSD staff was in one spot, to have that collaborative opening and shared vision, shared mission. It was great to have everybody right there and meet and welcome and get a chance to talk with them. It was great energy. We talked a little bit more, I think Mr. Vron's over there. When I hold my hand up to click, he's clicky, so I'm just going to go ahead and cue you. How's that sound? All right. Technology at its finest. So I want to take a moment, as President Morrison was saying, we had some recognitions this year, and I wanted to, you know, recognize that on Monday, one of the things that we did was to recognize the following staff for their continued commitment to the students of the Sitka School District. It was great being able to be together so we can have those staff members stand up and be recognized in front of their peers for the longevity and the focus and commitment that they had given and have given to the students of the Sitka School District. So that was a great thing to be able to do on that day with the staff. One of the topics we talked about was establishing a mentoring opportunities for staff at all experience levels. One of the things that we're working on with, with all of our staff is trying to find mentoring and develop mentoring programs that focus on really an induction support program for new to Sitka School District staff, and that could be anywhere from a first year teacher to a more veteran teacher that is new to the Sitka School District. In addition, we're looking at early career supports and mentoring opportunities for early career teachers and staff, as well as in the process of having discussions and looking at developing teacher-staff led collaboration in time and mentoring that really focuses on providing growth opportunities and mentoring and collaboration across all of our staff. No matter what year you have been in the district, making sure that those collaborations are taking place. We also had a presentation from Dr. Maungan Ralas, a distinguished teacher professor at the University of Minnesota, who describes herself as having a lifelong passion for seeking ways in which education could empower and help all students to learn. The other special focus of our in-service was the new Sitka School District strategic plan developed last spring when the community came together to collaborate on the mission, vision, and goals of SSD moving forward. I've sent this out to families already in my first email, but this is the new Sitka School District mission statement, developed from our strategic planning session. The Sitka School District will intentionally develop Hala Tzini, our strength of mind, body, and spirit, to inspire and prepare students to be compassionate, empowered, and equipped critical thinkers within a global community. In addition, these are the strategic, strategies that were identified in the strategic planning sessions to help SSD accomplish our goals and enact our beliefs. The strategies really are focused on, we will identify strategies to close the learning gap. We will strengthen culturally responsive programming. We will expand and strengthen partnerships. We will produce a professional development mentorship induction program for SSD staff. We will develop an internal and external district communication plan, and we will expand opportunities and remove participation barriers for students. We will have action plan teams comprised of parents, staff, community members, and students working on each of these strategies. We're looking for volunteers now, so if you're interested in being a part of the action plan teams, you can email info@sitka schools.org. The action plan teams really are going to focus on what actions or changes will occur, who will carry out the changes, by when they will take place and for how long, and what resources are needed to carry out these changes. And again, the action plan teams will be focusing specifically on the strategies that were identified. And now it's time for our COVID-19 update. I'm going to take some time here and go through all of the information so everyone knows where we are, why, and where we're heading. I've said from the beginning of this, being the superintendent, that I have a very simple philosophy that guides everything that I do as an educator. What's best for students? We know that full day in-person education is best for most students, and that layered mitigation strategies will enable us to have a successful start to the school year. As I've said before, if returning to in-person learning isn't right for your family at this time, we have an excellent option, option available. Our REACH program has been serving local families for nearly 30 years. Please call for more information and to let us know how we can support your students. I also already sent this out to all SSD families, but we'll review it again here on the importance of in-person education. At the Sitka Assembly Meeting, Dr. Zink responded that 100% agree to a statement when, "We need our kids in school," she said. "There's good data that they don't do as well when they're out of school." According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, "An organization of nearly 70,000 pediatricians, remote learning highlighted inequities in education, was detrimental to the educational attainment of students of all ages, and exasperated the mental health crisis among children and adolescents. It's estimated that 3 million students in the nation went missing during the pandemic. They disappeared from virtual school." Writing about this current point in the pandemic, "With the data we have about low rates of in-school transmission when proper prevention measures are used, the American Academy of Pediatrics concludes, 'Everything possible must be done to keep students in school in person.'" The CDC makes the same point in its guidance for schools. Children should return to full-time in-person learning in the fall with layered prevention strategies in place. And speaking about variants in children too young currently to be vaccinated, those under 12, Dr. Zink said, quote, "We're not seeing any significant change in our young kids," end quote. Dr. Zink reported that about 1% of the state's total hospitalizations have been for children under 18. We've learned a lot about how important in-person education is to students, and also a lot about the virus in the past year. We also have some important new mitigation strategies, like our ability to offer rapid testing at school this year, and I'll talk more about that in detail later. With all that we've learned and all of the tools that we have, we now have, we're taking an important step forward this fall with the return to in-person learning. We can look back at last fall and compare where we are now. So when we look back at last fall, we had a combination in some classes in some schools, remote and in-person instruction, some limited elective classes, and teachers moving around classroom to classroom in some schools. As we look at this fall, we're looking at a full day schedule, in-person classes, full elective offerings, and daily in-person connection with staff and peers. SSD's current alert level is high. You can see that right there on our front site on our webpage. Like last year, the designation of our alert levels comes from COVID cases in our community. The American Academy of Pediatrics tells us that school transmission reflects, but does not drive, community transmission. In other words, opening schools generally does not increase transmission in the community, but what happens in the community does affect schools. The updated COVID mitigation documents I'll be referencing are at these links. The travel policy is on our homepage, too. It remains unchanged from last year, except have been updated to reflect our new in-school ability to offer testing. So our high alert level here is based on COVID cases in the community. This is the total count of cases, not the average, in a 14-day period. So right now, we're over 100 cases. Last I looked today, I believe we calculated with 109 cases. You see here that our high case threshold is 15 cases. So we're well above the threshold and well above even the moderate alert levels. Last year, the city used a 14-day count, and SSD used a seven-day count. So SSD staff would have to get city data every day and then convert those numbers to a seven-day scale for SSD to establish our risk level. We heard back from members of the community that it was confusing with these different systems, one for SSD and one for the city. So this year, when you see the red alert sign outside the fire department, you'll know that SSD is also in the same red alert level. The city will be updating the COVID dashboard around September 1st, following recommendations from state epidemiologists. When the city makes that change, we will too, and that corresponds to the red section of the chart here. You'll also see a red alert level sign on our school doors. We have four alert levels like the city, instead of three as previously, with the same color codes as the city. The previous low category became minimal. We also divided out the previous high categories into high and moderate, so we have some flexibility at the moderate level for parents to attend sporting events. I suspect that parents will want to attend sporting events right away, and I get it. I was in a high school athlete, I was a high school athlete myself, but I'm going to ask that you give us a little bit of time with our students only, and then we'll look at bringing spectators back. One consideration for us is the limited seating in the Sitka High bleachers. In the meantime, volleyball and most of our sporting events will be broadcast online. In addition, we had no secondary COVID transmission last year in schools. This year's plans and mitigations are not new. They build upon last year's successes. They also look ahead to a time when COVID cases drop significantly in our community. Again, we currently have over 100 cases in 14 days in the community. Our high threshold starts at 15. We will need to drop by approximately 90 cases in two weeks, even to get to the moderate level. Like last year's successful mitigation plans, SSD currently, SSD's current mitigation plans are informed by data and research on COVID students and schools from national organizations like the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, and also from state public health officials and Dr. Zink, who spoke at a recent Sitka Assembly Meeting. But the most crucial voices in the construction of SSD's plans come from this community. Dr. Bruhl, Dr. Vestola, and Sitka's Public Health Nurse Denise Ewing have generously reviewed her works, reviewed or worked with the district on our mitigation plans. We also have a Smart Start Task Force of parents, teachers, and principals. Finally, I've held parent listening sessions on our back-to-school plans and one for staff as well, and I'd also like to take this moment to thank Nurse Ewing for participating in those parent meetings, too. I talked in my last email to parents about the 10 different layers of fencing that are going to help us open schools this year, and here they are again. Most of these were in place last year, but the ones in bold represent new additions for this school year. Masking for staff and students, physical distancing, checking for symptoms and staying home if sick or symptomatic, reinforcing good hand hygiene, lots of fresh air even inside, frequent cleaning of indoor spaces and touch points, quarantine isolation and contact tracing as required, community vaccinations, ozone-free air cleaning ionization technology, and rapid in-school testing. Now let's take a look in more detail about one of these strategies, masks. Like I said, we are currently in this high level. The threshold for shifting from high to moderate is 14 cases in the community in 14 days. We're currently at over 100 cases in 14 days. Starting school, masks or face coverings are required for all students and staff regardless of vaccination status. We will, however, have supervised and physically distanced mask breaks for students. We do not have a district distinction between masking for vaccinated and unvaccinated students at this time. 68% of our students aged 12 through 18 are vaccinated, but schools don't have a way to monitor vaccine status for COVID-19. We can't know at a glance who has been vaccinated and who hasn't. So everyone will be wearing a mask. Masks are also required on all public transit, including buses by federal order. The CDC said, quote, "It will be, it will be amending this order as soon as practicable to not require that people wear masks," end quote, "on buses." So when that happens down the road, we'll let you know of that change. And let me make this very important point. Optional masks in our minimal and low levels means that parents have the option of sending their students to school in masks at those levels. These are the highlights of our mask and face covering guidelines in modern high alerts, just as we look at when mask face coverings are required. Masks must be worn while indoors during the student contact day. When the community alert level is moderate or high, all staff and students must wear a mask or a face covering at all times within a school building. Mask and face coverings are required for all staff and students on the bus. When a mask and face covering is optional, while eating or drinking, of course, physical distancing of three to six feet should be in place observed. Mask and face coverings are optional in outdoor playground areas for staff and students during supervised mask breaks. If staff members move within three feet of a student or another staff member in an outdoor setting, they should use a mask face covering. Masking is optional for vaccinated district staff before and after the student contact day while the community alert level is minimal, low, or moderate. Masking is required for all staff gatherings with more than five staff while the alert level is moderate or high. Physical distancing will be observed regardless of vaccination status. And we've included a definition for masks. Mask means a medical-grade face mask. A face covering means a cloth, polypropylene, or other face covering. Both mask and face coverings must cover the nose and the mouth and rest snugly above the nose, below the mouth, and on the sides of the face. A face shield is not a mask for a face covering. Here's why we need masks right now in school. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, "When worn correctly, face masks create a barrier that reduces the spray of a person's spit and respiratory droplets. These droplets play a key role in the spread of COVID-19 because they can carry the virus that causes COVID-19." CDC recommends a universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. Children should return to full-time in-person learning in the fall with layered prevention strategies in place. That's from the CDC update of August 5th, 2021. Use layered prevention strategies such as masking, distancing, and ventilation, especially now when cases are high and climbing per CDC guidelines. K-12 students who properly use masks won't need a quarantine if exposed to COVID-19 in an indoor classroom. We know from experience that masks work. When kids use masks in schools, last year, very little transmission occurred. It is one thing to open schools, it is another to keep them open. Masking is a game changer for kids going, getting to learn. Masking is a game changer for kids getting to learn in person. Dr. Zink's editorial on August 16th, 2021. And the AAP recommends "universal masking in school at this time," and that is, of course, the American Academy of Pediatrics interim guidance recommendation for opening schools. If you're concerned about students wearing masks right now, masks are breathable and do not block oxygen. According to pediatric lung experts, they do not interfere with the lung development, and they do not trap carbon dioxide. Carbon dioxide molecules are very tiny, even smaller than respiratory droplets. They cannot be trapped by breathable materials like cloth or disposable masks. I would also add that students around the world wore masks last year even in Sitka. If you're concerned that masks right now will delay speech or language development, there are no known studies that the use of a face mask negatively impacts a child's speech and language development, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. They ask us to consider that visually impaired children develop speech and language skills at the same rate as their peers. Young children will use other clues provided to them to understand and learn language. They will watch gestures, hear changes in tone of voice, see eyes convey emotions, and listen to words. Pre-pandemic research in journal cognition suggested that children under 9 preferred studying the eyes, the eyes area, even when they could see full faces. A professor of pediatrics at the NUI Children's Hospital said, quote, "Kids adjust. Kids adjust. They adapt, and when they don't have to wear masks, they'll adapt again." Note when the professor says here, "when they don't have to wear masks, they'll adopt again." Now I'm going to put that slide up again, and I'd like to draw your attention to something. All of these experts recommend masking right now, while case numbers are high, but not forever. The CDC recommends "universal masking in schools." Does it say students should wear masks forever? It doesn't. The CDC's guidance is for learning in the fall. The CDC tells us of other guidance to wear a mask if you are in the area of substantial or high transmission, not low transmission, high transmission. Dr. Zink talks about the importance of masking now when cases are high and climbing, not when they are low or minimal and stable. The American of Pediatrics recommends "universal masking at this time in the fall of 2021." Even the experts that recommend masks now are not saying that students or staff will be in masks forever or when transmission rates are low and stable. In fact, Dr. Zink was quoted in a Raven Radio story this week as saying, quote, "Mask in school is not something that will be here forever," end quote. So the Sitka School District's mask policy is not only for today, when we're in our high alert level and masks are required, but also for that time down the road, and it will likely be a long time down the road when we are no longer in an area of substantial or high transmission. And experts advise us that the situation has changed. We can plan for and look forward to that day even now. School transmission reflects but does not drive community transmission, so when community transmission is down, SSD's mitigations will shift to reflect that change, which is exactly what the CDC tells us to do. What will be the CDC's guidance at that point in time? The CDC updates its guidance regularly. Its guidance now for fall 2021 will not be the same then. One constant in all of the guidance for schools, including the CDC, is the importance of local medical experts and public health authorities in the development of schools' mitigation plans. SSD is very grateful to have had local public health officials and physicians who are on the front lines battling COVID every day in the community work on our mitigation plans, including on our masking guidelines for all risk levels. Here's the bottom line. We will not reach the lower minimal level with seven or few cases in 14 days until we have turned the corner with Delta. Again, we're talking about a number of cases in 14 days and not an average. Our low level represents seven cases of zero cases in the community. Let me add again that parents will still have the option to send their students to school in masks at the minimal and low levels, should they choose to do so. Another area we received a lot of help from our local medical professionals and health officials relates to the new rapid testing we're going to be able to offer at schools. One of our Smart Start Task Force members, which also review these protocols, described testing as a game changer. If there's a silver lining with Delta variant, it's that we can more quickly detect its viral load. So really new at-school access rapid testing enables us to identify possible positives, confirm negatives in 15 minutes, reduce isolation times for close contacts, test symptom-free students when they return from close contact isolation on day four, test for extracurricular activities even and extra activities, events, and school travel, and if symptom-free, test after travel. Test weekly at your school. No testing will be done without parent or permission from the guardians. You'll also find this on our front page of our website. It's a testing and return-to-school procedures document. It outlines some scenarios and how our new at-school testing helps us keep kids in school. So a couple of key points when you look at the testing and return-to-school policy. Students that test positive or staff that test positive on a rapid antigen test really means that the student or the staff should isolate and obtain a PCR test to confirm their positive status. Of course, PCR tests are available in Sitka at search. A positive PCR test that a staff or student receives, if they have a positive test, will need to isolate for at least 10 days. Total length of time for that quarantine will be determined by public health. If students or staff have COVID-like symptoms, if they have symptoms at home experiencing cold or flu-like symptoms, they should remain home from school, isolate as much as possible, and obtain a PCR test. These tests are available at search. Parents should contact the school's front office to notify the school if a student is out sick. Students and staff can return to in-person instruction with a negative PCR test result and after being symptom-free for 24 hours. Parents should send a copy of that negative result to their building principal. If symptoms develop at school, staff and students will need to isolate and follow isolation procedures. Arrangements will be made for the student to return home. Students should be picked up as soon as possible, and students and staff can return to in-person learning with a negative PCR test and after being symptom-free for 24 hours, as described above. If we have close contacts, and this is where the testing, I think, is going to be really important for keeping students in school as much as possible. If we have a close contact, obviously, parents will be notified by their principal or classroom teacher that their student has been in close contact of a confirmed positive case. Students identified as close contacts will go home with their tablets and laptops. The school and teacher, in consultation with the student and parent, will collaborate on assignments needed while the student is not in person. Students can return to in-person learning on day four with a rapid antigen test at the building front office or with a negative result for a PCR test on day four. Day one will be the date of last exposure with identified positive case. If a staff member or student is identified by public health as a close contact of a positive case outside of school, this should be communicated to the principal or the front office. Vaccinated staff who are symptom-free are able to work from their classrooms in this situation. However, testing on day four after possible exposure is required. Students should remain home until day four after exposure, then test at the front office of their school. Students can return to in-person learning with a negative rapid test. If a student is in close contact of a positive family member in their home and are not able to quarantine separately from that positive family member, they should test four days after the family member completes their 10-day isolation. Any student or staff member who is identified as a close contact of a COVID-19 positive individual and chooses not to test will need a quarantine for 10 days prior to returning to in-school instruction. We will be able to bring students back. Last year, when we had testing in the spring, it took anywhere from seven to 10 days to bring students back into the building when they were a close contact. We will be able to bring them back in the building on day four after they're sent home as being a close contact. The focus this year is on keeping students in school as much as possible and supporting the students when they're, you know, out of school due to close contact. Just a few more slides. I wanted to go over the last document I have for you is really the last piece of our COVID update. It's our travel protocols. These are the same as last year, but again, updated to reflect our new in-school testing. We think this really is going to be a very convenient for everyone and help keep our schools open and our students learning. I'd like to again stress that we won't do any testing unless we have permission of a parent or guardian, but I'd like to encourage you, as Dr. Zink says, to test often. So really fast, as we look at our testing protocols, all unvaccinated staff and students traveling out of Alaska for more than 72 hours are recommended to test at the airport upon returning to Sitka. And of course, upon returning, staff and students should follow strict social distancing protocols, including not entering the school building until receiving a negative test four days after returning from travel. Staff and students can test at their school on day four as long as they are symptom-free. If students have symptoms or staff have symptoms, we do not want them to come into the building. They need to receive a negative PCR test if they have symptoms. But if they are symptom-free, they can come in and test and then go back into the classroom after day four. All fully vaccinated staff and students, of course, fully vaccinated is having that second dose of a two-dose layer, vaccination should say, two weeks after the second dose has been administered, are not required to quarantine after travel. Fully vaccinated staff and students are still recommended to test in their school using a rapid test on day four. Again, we have the rapid test in the building. It takes as little as 15 minutes. We're encouraging everyone, when they can, regularly to test. And for instance, travel testing at the airport upon arrival back in Sitka is highly recommended for all travelers. Staff and students are also recommended to test in the school on day four as long as they are symptom-free. So we're going to continue to monitor the situation, working with public health officials. And we all know that this is a fluid situation, and it can change, and your principals and I will continue to keep you updated. The last month along, we've communicated via emails, had parents' listening sessions for both elementary and secondary parents, held a staff listening session, and held a Smart Start Task Force meeting. And again, principals continue to work with their school's Smart Start Task Force to identify areas of need or concern at the building level. The district office and building admin will continue to monitor the situation in the schools and community, and then the district office will be in close contact and communication with EOC, local medical experts, and families regarding changes or developments. Final item I'd like to talk about is just our vaccination rate. The current vaccination rate for Sitka School District staff, for in-building staff, is 88%. And of course, I said this earlier in the presentation, the students age 12 through 18 vaccination rate is at 68%. That picture is just a picture of my old-school nurse from service who was giving me a vaccine last year. So a student put together this piece of art, and I thought I'd share that. And then the last little bit, I just wanted to thank everyone, and I'm happy to answer questions. And again, we are excited for the first day of school to have students back in the building on Monday, August 23rd. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I know that was a lot of information, but I wanted to make sure that I got as much of that information to you as I could. And so at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hi, I was wondering about... I was reading the Bachelor Middle School handbook, and it said confusion was a COVID symptom? I'm a little confused about that. Can you please clarify?
So there are a number. If you go back and you look at over the last year, that was one of the difficulties with, you know, really identifying is there's a lot of different symptoms that COVID can exhibit in students, young children and adults. That was one, just like headaches. One of the areas, they're kind of considered secondary symptoms, but we do want to monitor and watch and be aware of any changes in student and really adult behaviors and kind of how they're feeling in developing any COVID-like symptoms. That's, I would say, one of those, if you will, secondary symptoms that you have. One of the primary symptoms that you'll see is really, you know, cold and flu-like symptoms, running nose, you know, some sore throats, headaches are also, temperature sometimes, though that specific symptom really doesn't exhibit itself that much in younger students. But that is just one of the ways that we are going through and just trying to highlight and make sure parents are aware that, you know, there are a number of different symptoms that students and adults can exhibit if they become COVID-positive.
I have a question. Thank you for all of that information. That was really informative. There was a quote by Dr. Zink on one of the slides. I wonder if I misunderstood it, but saying that if proper masking was in place, that even when a student was within exposure of a positive case, that perhaps quarantine wasn't even necessary. Did I misread that?
Well, this follows new CDC guidance that is different as the last CDC recommendations. What they're saying is when students and staff and everyone in the classroom is properly wearing a mask, of course, everyone has got their mask over the nose, under the chin, around the cheeks. When there is a close contact, everyone is properly masked. If they are even within, what they say in the CDC guidance, 3 to 6 feet, that students do not need to isolate as a close contact. So they did actually, last year, that number was 6 feet for 15 minutes or more cumulative contact. The CDC has changed their recommendations. At this point, the language states that if everyone is fully masked, then they do not need to, they're not considered a close contact if they're within 3 to 6 feet, which is a change from last year.
Okay, so but then our protocols are still, I mean, I'm just looking at the section close contact of positive case, that they still won't need to go home. I just, I think I'm confusing two different standards.
Yeah, that's a great, so if they're deemed a close contact, which as we go through and we do contact tracing, we'll identify students, and it will differ at the elementary level versus the secondary level. Right now, one of the things that we are wanting to be, especially as we start out and we're in high level, we really want to, at the elementary level, be conservative in how we're approaching this and making sure that we're monitoring. If we do have a confirmed positive case at the elementary level, we are looking at isolating the students and then having them test on day four, coming back again, that most likely will only be two days out of school. As we get started, the guidelines are that that distance between 3 and 6 feet, you do not need to consider, or it's 3 feet really and more, they're not considered a close contact. At the secondary level, as we go through, we do contact tracing, of course, since we are having classes that are full scheduled, students are going around from class to class. We do have cleaning taking place in the classrooms between every single period, high-touch surfaces. We have a new cleaning solution. It's called Effersan. That is a hypochlorous disinfectant, which is a very mild disinfectant for humans, but really potential, almost 100 times more potent against viruses and bacterias than bleach. And so we have those available in every single classroom that is an EPA-approved product to be used in schools. We have those spray bottles that are going to be available in every single classroom. In between every period, we'll spray down all of our high-touch surfaces, our desks, to make sure that we're doing, again, layered mitigations. But when we do contact tracing in that scenario, we'll go through, we get a confirmed positive, we check, okay, are they on a sports team, or do they ride the bus? Was there anybody within 3 feet of those students? Was everybody fully masked? And then we'll go through the contact tracing. At the point at which we identify a group of students that have to be isolated, it's because we've gone through and done the contact tracing to determine they were within 3 feet for an extended period of time. For some reason, maybe they didn't have a mask on in school. They should have a mask on at all time in moderate and high right now, the way that the, you know, the masking policy is written. And so really, I think, to answer your question, it's when we go through and identify a close contact, we are applying those rules of what, based on CDC guidance, determines and classifies somebody as a close contact.
Okay, thanks for that.
Sure.
Any other questions? Public, board?
Oh, yeah, if I may, I have actually a few, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
I was just wondering if with the masks, are we still, as a district, we have an adequate supply, where I'm thinking, based on what Mr. Wilcox was talking about during persons to be heard, if we, as staff members, are determined or feel like a child's mask is, you know, maybe not very clean or been used, I assume we still have quantities available to be able to trade out for those kids?
We, early on this summer, purchased replenished supplies of PPEs, including masks, hand wipes, as well as some hand sanitizer. In addition, I have had a couple of schools that have put in requests, and we can utilize COVID funds to pay for face masks. I know that I've got one from Sitka High School. Bearinoff, last year, utilized the cloth mask, and they would go ahead and give them out at the beginning of the day to the students, collect them at the end of the day, wash them, and return them, and so they've got that plan in place, so they'll continue to utilize that. But we do- that. But we do have masks and face coverings available for students, and we'll continue to monitor that, those supplies, but we should have plenty to get us through. I mean, we've got enough for a long time, but we'll continue to monitor and order more. In addition, there's a Department of Health and Social Services warehouse that enables us to put in requests as well for PPEs that the state has stockpiled for resources for schools and other departmental agencies. But yeah, we're okay right now stocked for PPEs.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. Another question is, with the administration of the rapid tests, I'm just, I used to be in the medical field, I was wondering, who are going to be doing those tests and what kind of training have they had? Because I, I'm just curious.
No, that's a great question. So when we were looking at receiving the grants, one of the things that we wanted to do, because we want to have a robust testing process for anyone that wants to, staff or students, come into the schools. To kind of elaborate a little bit more on your question, I think the other part two is really important, as we look at dealing with administering tests, there's a confidentiality nature that is involved in that. And that's part of what our school nurse Shelley is, you know, working with us. In addition, we have a paraprofessional that we've shifted her role to, from being a paraprofessional at the high school level to actually being our testing coordinator and working directly with students. She has a CNA background, so she's had some experience in the nursing field, and she also was a primary support for Nurse Shelley last year as well. And so they've already came in, and we've had conversations, they're already working on making sure that in each school where we have the testing taking place, which is in each school, and we'll have, every single school will have a day a week, for example. Sitka High School will be Monday morning, Blackstone Middle School will be Tuesday, so forth, that students and staff can come and test, parents can bring the kids in and test. There will be a designated area for them to test and make sure when they go through that we're, again, making sure that it's efficient. We want to make sure we get people through and get them to class as quickly as possible. But, and then again, these tests are really quick. One of the nice things about the Abbott Binocs Rapid Test, it doesn't require a nurse to administer. It's a nasal swab, the application of some drops in the testing, it's like a little teeny matchbook you open up, you drop the drops in, do the nasal swab, both nasals, put it in, seal it up, and wait for 15 minutes, and then it'll give you essentially an indicator of negative or positive. And so it's pretty straightforward to administer. In most cases, students can administer it themselves, not doing the drops, but do the nasal swab. And so that's kind of part of our process and procedures for when they come in, obviously making sure that we're keeping the confidentiality nature of the test that we're doing, bringing them through in an efficient way, having everything established so where they can come in, do the test, and then we monitor how that test goes and if it comes back positive. And this is important, the rapid positive is not necessarily an indication that the student is COVID-positive. It's an indication that the student should, or a parent should take the student to search to have a PCR test. So the positive is not a determinant that that student is positive, or that individual that took the test is positive. But a negative test on one of the antigen tests is something that you can trust. And so it's interesting how that works, but right now, it really, I think, when we're looking at our testing protocols, gives us the ability to go through and really efficiently and effectively determine if an individual is really negative and be able to get them in class, as well as, especially with Delta, because of the higher viral load that Delta is exhibiting in individuals that are positive, COVID-positive with Delta, the ability to test is so much quicker. So we are able to test and get an accurate reading because of the higher viral load within three days, and that's why we have that return on, to test on day four if there's a close contact, because what we've heard when we've consulted public health and medical professionals is by day four, doing a rapid test, if an individual is COVID-positive, it will come back positive. You know, there's, I mean, it's, there's, you know, and in some of these, I mean, I guess you could say there's no 100% guarantees, but the odds of it coming up positive, like I say, it really is at day three, when that viral load is high enough that when we do the swab, it will come back positive.
Yeah, thank you. And just in my history of hogging the bandwidth for the microphone, I just have two more questions that I might.
Please.
And maybe Mike might, your maintenance, but did all of the buildings, they did get all, did the new air system get installed?
So I'm going to need to get an update from Mike on this. Ionization units are en route. So we've actually, as soon as we got the quote from Siemens, we went ahead and put the PO on place and placed that order. I think they were out anywhere from four to six weeks, maybe, Mike, if you want to come in and speak to that. So I don't believe they've actually come in yet. We're in the process of working and identifying, you know, how to get them installed. My hope is that when they come in, we can have a fast turnaround, get them installed as soon as possible. I would love to see and have them installed by the beginning of September. I just, I don't have a firm date of when that's going to be. I do want to add, and this was in a conversation Mike and I had when we were touring the facilities, and I appreciate Mike giving me that tour, we still have a number of the MERV-11 and MERV-13 rated air filters that we have in place, which is an upgrade from our usual air filters, which is, I believe, a MERV-7. And so for the opening and for the beginning, we're going to go and use those higher filters, those higher-rated filters. Again, it's an extra mitigation, it's an extra layer of protection, and then when we get the ionization units, that will again be another, you know, protection. I can ask, if you have, I can bring Mike up, did you have more questions, I mean, no, it's okay?
No, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And it lasts, it's really more, just isn't really a question, it's just a statement or, you know, I was contacted by three different members of the public regarding the use of, you know, masks or not using masks in the low and minimal. And much to probably their disappointment, I came into the meeting tonight to be advocating that at all levels, until we figure out what the variants, because there's, as of July 22nd, CDC identified Alpha, Beta, Gamma, and that, you know, the Delta variants that are potentially out there, and just to kind of see how things play out. However, based on, you know, the reports, no surprise from our principals, yourself, staff, the presentation, I printed it off and read through it in great detail the other night, this, this document right here, this could be a national document for public schools. The work that our community has done, you know, we've already mentioned all of the players, it's our, it's our town. This, this is, I mean, it's not foolproof, it doesn't mean it's going to work 100%, but I can't think of a place anywhere that has been this thorough. And maybe they are, but this is, this is truly like something that could be, you know, used on a national level. And I, and I was talking earlier tonight about areas in our, in our country that have done almost none of this or very little of it, and they're shut down. Tallahassee in Florida, I may have my facts wrong, as of Tuesday, they were, Monday, they had over 6,000 children, you know, had tested positive and 400 staff. There's an entire county in Georgia, you know, that their, their schools are shut down. And, but when you bore down and figure out what was going on, none of, very little there, none of this is being done. You know, I do take the heart a little bit with what Mr. Wilcox spoke to, I know Brett well. One thing I can say in his, in his work is he's extremely thorough. His book Jabbed, there's 40 pages of references, you know, so I mean, there's some interesting research. But once again, with Dr. Zink and what's been presented, this is really, really good work, and I'm very, very comfortable as a board member, what we're doing here. I think it's, it's really remarkable, and there's a lot of thanks to be put out there for our district and our community for making that happen. And like Amy said, I really, really hope that Sitka can be a community that keeps, don't get offended, but keeps politics and religion out of the schools, making decisions. Hysteria isn't going to get us anywhere. The good thing about science is it's true whether you believe it or not. And, you know, we're following the science, and I'm glad we are. So thank you for the work.
We had a couple of comments online. One was a question about the rapid testing that I answered in the chat, but just to clarify, the rapid tests that we have available in each building do not involve sending results to search. We're able to do those rapid tests on the spot with our staff and our training we're providing and get the results within 15 minutes. So that's one of the big changes from last year, is we're not, we're no longer going to have to wait up to three to five days for those results, although I did point out also in the chat that search and the efficiency of the lab, I've been communicating with them, as you might imagine lately, they're efficient, they've really upgraded equipment and staffing, and they're turning around their PCR tests within one to two days, often sometimes in the same day. So if you look at the case table on the dashboard, you'll see that those results are coming within a day, and those are PCR results that you're seeing on the dashboard. So, but it's important to note that our rapid testing available weekly for students and staff, optional, is at the building, it's, those results happen within 15 minutes. We don't have to send those to search and wait for those results.
Was there another question you said? I think maybe there were a couple, or?
I think there's, someone has a hand up in the Zoom, and if there's anyone who wants to unmute and ask a question, this is a good time.
Chris?
Chris?
Yes?
This is Patty, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
How, how are attendance policies, where are those going to be addressed as it relates to students who have to quarantine and miss days of school?
That's a good question. So if I understand it correctly, please, I just want to make sure you kind of broke out there for a second, but really the question is about attendance policy for students that have to miss some school. And one of the things that, when we look at the ability, especially for those close contacts, the focus, and one of the things we're really excited about, you know, if we can say excited about anything that has to do with COVID, is the rapid testing enables us to bring students back that much sooner. And so we've been talking a lot about that collaboration and consultation between the teacher, with the student, with the parents, with the principal, to make sure that those students that are out for close contact have direct contact with the teacher. Their principals and teachers are working on communication, making sure that those students will have access, you know, we are a one-to-one school district now, it's all students will either have a tablet or a laptop, so they'll have access to those resources. If students do not have the ability to have internet at home, we are looking at ways to be able to provide a laptop or an iPad that has internet connectivity to where they can continue to have direct communication with their teachers, to make sure that if they need support on any of that homework or assignments. Of course, if students have to stay home sick or quarantined, they will have a right to make up all that homework for, you know, the, make up all the homework for full grades as long as they turn it in. Obviously, if, you know, they had homework due in September and they turned it in December 20th, that probably is a little bit later than we would want that to happen, but they will be able to make up that work. If we do have students that are COVID-positive and they do have to quarantine for an extended period of time, again, that collaboration, consultation between the teacher, between the student, between the parent and the administrator will happen to make sure that the teacher is working with the student and the families to provide the information that they need, the curriculum. We're working on having some office hours and coordinating times when that student is going to be able to have direct contact with the teacher to have those supports in place for them. I really want to make sure that teachers are able to communicate and meet the needs of students and the lessons and the academics that need to be done to ensure that when that student does come back into the building after either the close contact isolation or the quarantine due to COVID-19, they're able to seamlessly make that transition. And the technology, having those online resources and that robust communication, I think, is one of the keys that we're going to be able to make that happen.
I typed out follow-up.
Go ahead. It looks like Patty's follow-up questions were, would those days out for, you know, being in close contact, those two days, would those count, if they completed work, would those count as days attended, or would they be days absent? And at the high school level specifically, or secondary level, would it be one teacher doing the lesson and trackings, or would the students have to work with each teacher?
The student one, because, you know, they'll have a full schedule, the student would need to communicate and work with the teachers as they're going through, wouldn't want the student to miss any assignments due to not communicating with the teacher, say, in their third-period class. So they would want to communicate, and the teachers would be communicating with them, again, trying to utilize some of the online resources that were developed with some of the student management systems last year to be able to provide curriculum online. Right now, as I look at it, if a student is out because they're sick, that is considered a sick day, so the big thing, I think, is important, I mean, we're, we're working with COVID, and we want to make sure that we're supporting our families and supporting our students. And the big focus is if students are out for, whether it's isolation or quarantine, they will be able to make up that work that they missed, because, I mean, we want them to have that encouragement to do that work. So like I said, when they transition back into the building, whether it's after, you know, really on day four, if they're a close contact and symptom-free and they test negative, or it's on day 10, they come back and really have a seamless transition.
No other raised hands or anything on there, Chris?
Anybody else online that would like to unmute and comment or make a question?
All right, any board questions, comments, or anyone in the room? Well, I just want to say thank you for putting this all together, and it was a lot of work, like Eric said, you could win awards for this, I think. And, you know, last year, our board made the decision to really leave it up to administration. We didn't want to, you know, have to approve at the board level what our mitigation plans were, because, like you said, it is so fluid, and when we meet once a month, you know, things can change so much in that time. So I think, I, you know, I think the board's still, I think, nod, so, you know, is in agreement that that's the way we want to handle this, and we appreciate that, and definitely know you're on top of it, so thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you. I think that wraps up that portion. I know we're almost two hours in, but we really only have like one other thing on our agenda, really, so can we plow through? And that was the end of your report, correct?
That concludes my report.
Okay. Make sure I didn't cut you off there.
You're welcome.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, can you give, I know you probably don't have a chart, you've been really busy with this, but can you give us a rough estimate of where we're at with enrollment? Sorry.
So I've reached out to a number of schools, like Principal White said, numbers are a little bit higher. Actually, we're seeing good numbers at Pacific. Talked to the registrar at Sitka High School. Right now, I think the numbers that I heard, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, I want to say it was almost 40 students higher than what they'd had. Now, there is a bubble that has been going through, and so that accounts for some of it, but also there's some families that are in town doing some construction projects with the end-of-the-road kind of extension, as well as the, building the housing units for, I think, some of the, for search and or at least tied to that. I'm still, still new to the community, so figuring out some of those, you know, specific projects that aren't necessarily, you know, connected to the schools. But right now, you know, from what I'm seeing, I'm seeing some good things. We have, like I said, some of the trends, I think, that returned to in-person school has brought some students back to have that, you know, kind of in-school experience again, having access to elective. school has brought some students back to have that, you know, kind of in-school experience again, having access to electives, full schedule, full classes. And so, right now, based on just some of the conversations I've had, I'm seeing good things. I do not have a specific, you know, data on, on that hard data.
That's okay, I just wanted to know the trend. And that's an great trend. So, thanks.
All right, so moving on to new business, if we can get a motion for 11-8.
I move to approve the FY22 Capital Improvement Plan application as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the FY22 Capital Improvement Plan application as presented. And we have Mike Butterlava here to give us some information on this.
That should actually be FY23. At least on.
I was just reading the script.
But just so there's, just so there's no, if you guys approved FY22 last?
Yep, we should get, technically get an amendment to the motion then.
Okay. I move to amend the motion to state, I move to approve the FY23 Capital Improvement Plan application as presented.
Second. So, it is a move and seconded to approve the FY23 Capital Improvement Plan application as presented. So, go ahead.
Um, okay, first of all, I think if you look closely at what was in the packet, you'll see that the dollar amounts for each particular year do not necessarily add up. I've made the changes on the, the document that will be signed. You can see like in, for FY24, 180,000 plus 180,000 does not actually equal 700,000. So, I made the change on that. I mean, on the document that will be signed, all the numbers are correct. But this six-year capital improvement plan is identical to the one that you approved last year since none of these, none of these projects have been completed. So, if you have any questions on, on those.
One thing I was just going to add for clarification and some historical perspective on this, my understanding is this is the same one we've been approving for several years and there's been a moratorium from the state on capital improvement projects for six or seven years?
That sounds correct. I'm not exactly, and I'm not exactly sure where we are in that, in that time period. It's almost, it's almost identical, I think, two or three years ago, the board asked to move the two playground refurbishments up, up on the list to items two and three. That's the only change in the last, since I've been here anyway.
All right, thank you. So, I will open it up for any comments from the public. Is there any public comment to this? All right, any boards comments or questions?
Yeah, I just had one question. The last time we looked at this, I wondered it. And if it's just, if you can just give me some historical context or not, but I noticed that all of the proposals for fiscal year 2025 are capital projects that would result in direct cost savings. Electrical boiler installations and then upgrading lighting to LED. And I'm wondering why those aren't higher on the list of priority, just for those cost savings that should materialize pretty quickly.
Well, I believe they were items, two or three years ago, they were items. I had them listed as two, three and four, and the board asked to move the playgrounds to items two and three. So, those two shifted down. The other part of that is that the two electric boilers have already been installed. They were installed by the city and at the direction of both Don Hailey at search and Kathy Olin, who was our business manager up until recently. They asked me to keep them on the list because the state has in the past reimbursed projects that have already been completed.
Okay, thank you.
I'm so glad you said that because that baffled me. I was like, man, I swear when we did the energy audit thing that we had already done that.
No, it's the same, it's been the same question for the last.
Yeah, I was scratching my head. So, thank you.
I just had a quick question, Mike, on the regarding the LED lighting upgrade. I'm, I had a conversation with a community member and I can ask them to reach out to you that was directly involved with the Mount Edgicum High School. They, I believe, if I'm correct, I could have my information, not 100% correct, but they applied for a Siemens grant and were able to go through the entire campus over there.
Yeah, no, I'd love to hear from them.
And I was wondering if, if that might be something that we look at or if he was actually.
Absolutely.
So, if I were to reach out to this person, have them touch base with you because they have some historical context, would that be okay? Okay, thank you.
And we have done, we have done some LED upgrades. Throughout the district, the vast majority of our high-intensity discharge lighting has already been upgraded to a a lower consumption source of light.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? No, all right. So then, because there is a financial aspect to this, we will have to do a roll call vote on this. So, we are voting, the motion on the table is to approve the FY23 Capital Improvement Plan application as presented. Amy Morrison?
Yes.
Eric Van Sy?
Van Sy, yes.
Van Sy, I'm so sorry. Paul, Paul Beru?
Yes.
Blossom Teal Olson?
Yes.
And Andrew Haynes?
Yes.
All right, so motion passes. Thank you. All right, so, thank you very much, Mike. Okay, do you need to write this second? Okay. I can, I'll, I'll sign this and I do have a copy with the correct math on it, so. All right, yeah, I will get that signed. We're almost done here. So, um, let's see, we didn't have any correspondence and information. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that we didn't have on here. So, first day of school is Monday, August 23rd for most students with some staggered starts as we heard from our principals tonight. Next regular school board meeting is in two weeks, September 1st. I think back at our regular room or is that correct?
I do believe that will be in our regular room.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, this is a nice one though too, I like it. So, um, couple of other things as far as scheduling, just a reminder to the board, we have a few events coming up. And one thing I wanted to ask everybody about is we do have a special meeting set for October 13th, which is after the election to swear in our new board members. We do have Todd Gebler in the audience with us tonight, for those who don't know. I was wondering if we could potentially switch that to October 12th. It would be the Tuesday, the night, the day before. Just didn't know if there would be any conflict with other board members for that date or Todd, if you have any conflicts, you can. I, because I will probably be out of town, so that's my only concern. Okay, I'll talk to Don or we'll figure that out, see if we can get that moved then. I know there's a certain number of days you have to wait for the city to certify the election results, but I think we should be okay. The other thing, just for board members to keep on your calendar, is we have our annual retreat here in Sitka with Timmy Tollis from AASB on October 29th and 30th. So, October 29th, it's a Friday and Saturday, like Friday afternoon or evening and then most of the day Saturday. 29th and 30th. And then our annual AASB conference is in Anchorage, November 4th through 7th. And at this point, I haven't heard otherwise, it is still an in-person conference, yep. So, had to do virtual last year, much better being in person. So, hopefully that will still happen. The only other thing I wanted to mention is, you guys will all probably remember, we do the AASB resolutions that we go through as a board and that we have a deadline to, if we want to make any recommendations, changes, additions, whatever. That is due October 5th. So, the only meeting that we have left where we can do that would be September 1st. So, if we can divvy out tonight, our five, the five sections of that, so that in our meeting in two weeks, we can go over that. There's governance, funding, child advocacy, personnel and education programs. And I think, did I email you guys the link to that with the information? Do I send that? Okay.
And Jenny sent, or Tiffany sent it a couple of times as well.
Okay, okay. So, if anyone wants to volunteer, otherwise I can assign you a section, but Blossom, do you have a preference? Child advocacy, okay, so Blossom. Andrew?
I, I don't have any preference, so.
Okay, we'll see. Eric, do you have a preference?
Uh, no, you can assign to you, Jenny.
Funding, please.
What do you want?
Funding, please.
Funding, okay. Paul, so that leaves governance, personnel and education programs. I personally would love to do personnel. That's, so that would leave governance and education programs? Okay, and then governance, does that work for you? Okay. And Andrew, okay. All right, I think that is everything then. Yeah, so with that, our meeting is adjourned at 8:02 PM.